Good morning. Good morning. Good evening, Julie. Good evening, Ken. How are you?
I'm doing great. I actually made a meeting. Pretty good, huh?
Oh, it's wonderful to see you, Ken. It's wonderful to see you.
So there, hi, Ken. We've never met. I'm the ghost right here. I gotta fix my color and I'm gonna pop off screen for a moment and turn off my mic.
Okay.
All right.
So you've been quite busy.
Well, I just, I spent two weeks in Italy. So, you know, first time I've been back since December 19. So I've been, I've been almost two years since I've been back there. So, you know, I worked for the company in Italy.
Uh huh.
So it was good. I mean, it's nice. It's like it is here, you know. You test before you go, you test before you come back, and you test once you've been back. So.
Yeah, yeah.
But it's okay, you know.
And how are you, how do you find things there? I mean, people are.
Like here, the same. It's no different, almost exactly. You know, like, you know, where I go is in northern Italy. So there, it's very much like it is in Roxbury. I mean, it's like, it's the more affluent, higher percentage of vaccinated people than it is in southern Italy, you know, and you're really pretty safe. Honestly, the airports were not crowded, the plane was not crowded, I was up front, so it wasn't so bad. And, you know, it really didn't, it really was actually kind of a nice trip, because it wasn't so crowded, because it wasn't so crowded.
That is nice.
Yeah, had great weather, didn't have hardly any rain, just had a nice time. I got a lot of work done. I had a weekend to myself, which was nice. I headed up into the mountains and, you know, it's just a pretty good couple of weeks. I had a good time.
Oh, that sounds really nice, Ken.
Yeah, well, I used to go, I used to go four or five times a year, you know, and, you know, for like the last 15 years, actually.
I, I actually, I didn't realize that the company you worked for was based in Italy and that you, you did that. I know you did a lot of traveling. I didn't know you did.
Well, I used to, I used to be a sales rep for them, and then it got to be such a huge part of my business, and they really needed somebody full-time to cover North America. So I, I raised my hand, and I got out of everything else I was doing and just started to, just did this all with.
Uh huh. Well, that's great.
And Italians, Italians treat me great. They really do. I, I like working for them. The owner and I are exactly the same age. Our kids are the same ages, our grandkids are the same ages. So, you know, we have a lot in common. We've been working with each other now, we've been working with each other now for over 15 years. So we've got a great relationship, and he's just got a great company, and I really like working for the Italians.
Well, that's wonderful. That is absolutely wonderful. And how is your family and all those great grandchildren?
Well, everybody's doing great. They, I was down to see them a couple of months ago, and we all, we all got COVID. Because Trevor had an unvaccinated employee who gave it to all the management, who were all vaccinated, and all these, all these young men brought it home to their families.
Oh dear.
And I was visiting Trevor at the time. So I stayed a little longer in South Florida than I really wanted to.
Oh, oh dear.
Nobody had any symptoms, not even the kids, you know. Everybody was fine, you know. We really just, after about 10, 10, 10 days or so, we all tested negative. So, you know, it wasn't too bad, you know, because we're all vaccinated, the kids are little. So they didn't really, all they, all they cared about was going swimming. They really didn't even know they had COVID, you know. But, you know, it's, that's, that's usually what happens, but not always. We were just lucky, you know.
Yeah. Well, that's, that's good. I'm, I'm very glad to hear that. Oh, and look at who else is here. Hi, Bill.
How you guys doing?
Good. How are you?
Julie, Sharon, and Linda, how's everybody?
Hi.
I actually made it, Bill, so.
Great. Welcome. We're gonna have, we're gonna have your investiture today.
Okay.
Hi, Sharon. How are you?
Hi, Linda. How are you?
Good, good, good.
Want to make sure I could.
I'm sorry?
Want to make sure I could get on, because we haven't done this in a while.
Yeah, I had to, I had to reinstall it.
Really?
Yeah. I gave, I gave up, but I, I had to resort to my iPhone, so.
There you go.
Well, you're doing great. You're doing great. I can see you, and you're looking fine.
My, my day starts at 4:00 AM, so in about an hour, it's past my bedtime, so.
Let's try to, let's try to get Kenny to bed on time today.
No, I, I'm, I'm working on a huge project right now. You know, the Italians are six hours out of sync, so I need, I need a little extra time. So I, I've been getting up earlier. It's not all the time, but this week I am, so. The Italians have it right. They, they take a two-hour lunch. So if I don't get there before they go, it's six hours difference. So if I don't get there before they go to lunch, usually things aren't as productive in the afternoon.
But at least, but at least they're, they're in a good mood when they do get to the meeting.
Yeah, yeah, they, they do. And they work, if you can set your watch by it, you know, they work from, they work from seven to noon, seven to noon, two to six, and not 6:01.
Yeah.
Okay. Wow.
I have, I have the agenda up on my screen. It just came up. I don't know why.
Yeah, I think if you, if you pull on one of the corners, Sharon, it'll make the screen with all of our, our boxes bigger. And you can see all of us at the same time. Is that working?
Well, I see you up in the corner, but then I, I have Town of Roxbury Senior Center Agenda Meeting, and I've never had that before.
No, I think Julie put that on the, up so that.
Yeah, no, it's.
Review it. But I think if.
If, if you just minimize the top right-hand corner, for this cursor to the left, right there, yeah.
Top right-hand corner?
Right-hand corner, third, third, to the left side of that group.
Yeah. Way up top. Or just make this screen, and on my computer, it's, it's got a black background, and just kind of stretch the corners, make it bigger.
Uh oh. Uh oh, mine, I touched something and mine just went away.
Yeah, mine went to this Amazon.
Oh dear.
Oh, hold on.
Okay. I'm back. Well, I don't have to share the agenda. I can hear the chit-chat as I'm coming back to the computer. We can stop it if that helps everybody. But you can't miss a topic, so, because that's the copy I have.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
Is that better? Hi, Virginia, how are you?
I'm good. I got my hair done. Does it look better?
Oh, there's Virginia.
You look beautiful as always.
Oh, yeah, thanks. I just got a, I got a text from Tori saying she's going to be late. Her daughter had a blowout on her car or something, and Tori, Tori's got the kids.
Oh, my goodness.
I guess her husband, her husband went to rescue her, and Tori has the kids, but she'll be joining us as soon as she can.
Wait, what, what happened?
Her daughter, I guess, was driving and her tire blew out.
Oh my.
So her husband had to go and do whatever.
Tori had to go pinch-hit.
Yeah, Tori's got the kids.
Yep.
So.
Well, I'm glad Tori didn't have to deal with the flat tire.
Yeah.
She's got the easy part.
Yeah, yeah. She got the kids.
All right. Well, I guess we, you know, we could probably get started anyway. And Julie, this is, this is recorded, correct?
Yes, it is.
So if Tori wanted to, you know, go in and take a look at what, what she's missed, who knows how long that emergency circumstance.
Yes.
Right.
So we, we are, who's Bruce Tumala?
Isn't he the gentleman who's running for selectman?
Yes.
Wrong meeting?
Why is he, I don't know.
He's at the meeting.
His name's down there. He is.
Evening. Sorry. I was messing with my screen. Sorry. I'm just here to watch. Thanks. Good evening, everyone.
Oh, evening. How are you? Nice to meet you.
Nice meeting you as well. And yes, I am running for first selectman. I'm pleased to be with you.
Okay, so we are called to order, and we'll note that hopefully Tori will join us at some point soon. And all members are present except for Tori. And Julie, I know you take attendance, so I'll leave it at that.
And we'll note when Tori comes.
And I guess we should just review the minutes from our previous meeting. And approve them as we, as we've, we've looked them over. I, I have not taken the time to read them before this. So let me do that.
I do, I, Bill and, and everybody, I don't, you know, I don't mean to be, whatever. Should we have someone, is it okay that we have someone in our meeting? Was this person invited? Is it okay that this person just hops in? Just a question.
Julie, probably no.
It's, it's actually, your meetings are public.
Okay.
Right, the other, yeah, these, yes, we're not in executive, we're not in executive session. It's fine.
Okay. Just Mike, I've never run into that before. Just clarification.
Typically, nobody's interested enough, so, you know. If this works out, we can start selling tickets.
Something very new.
Yeah, I have no problem. It's just like Linda said, something new. That's all.
Yeah.
You know, Julie, I can't find the minutes from mine. Can you share them on the, on a screen?
I actually have them. They're attached to the backside of the agenda. So why don't I, I'll share that again. And so just let me know when you want me to flip the page. Do you need me to make it larger?
No, that, I can see it.
Okay.
June 3rd. Wow, that sounds like a long time ago.
Yes.
It was.
Was. My goodness.
Yeah, I read this already. Yeah, I did too. We get a gold star share.
I know. I guess so.
There's another page behind this?
There is. Very small.
Oh, 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 okay.
That's what came on when I first went, turned Zoom on.
Let's see. Did everyone get a chance to consume that, to see that?
Yep.
Yep. Yes.
Oh, it.
Take it down.
Any questions? It seems pretty straightforward to me, from my lack of memory. There were, there were things in there now that I do remember. So would somebody move to accept the minutes for the meeting?
I'll move to accept the minutes. I'll second.
On favor?
Aye.
A few.
opposed? Okay, so we've, we've accepted our minutes. Linda, Director's Report.
Yes. Hopefully you have that.
Are we waiting to put the report up?
I don't.
No, I was just looking, I was looking for mine. Great. I, I don't have any questions on, on the, on Linda's report. And any, well, I guess maybe, did they, it was just, I'm sure the water in the elevator bay, in the elevator pit, whatever it's called, is just the result of so much water.
Yeah.
At this.
Yeah.
This ridiculous suburb.
Oh, they were, they were, the water was discovered after our visit from Ida. So, and it just, it was just a coincidence that the elevator tech who comes routinely to do preventive maintenance on the elevator was, was there. And, oh, I'm sorry, it was after the Henry storm. So we, we looked at it again after Ida, and, and yes, water had, had, whether it's groundwater, we're not quite sure. But what we're doing is we are keeping an eye on it and requesting that the town crew come and pump it out. There's no, there's no machinery down there at the very bottom, but it's, it's something, you know, to be aware of. And we have asked the tech to, to, whenever he has seen signs, any signs of rust, to, I would buy cans of Rust-olium and ask that he just go over any rusted areas. And he's always been very, very happy to do that for us.
Is there standing water down there?
Not now. I don't believe so, Ken.
And, and not typically, right?
No, no. And it's the, the, that elevator costs the town a great deal of money. So it is maintained often, and prevent, preventive maintenance. And there's a maintenance log that is in the elevator room, which is different than the pit, which is basically the bottom of where the elevator goes up and down. And then there's basically an area as big as the elevator below it. So that, so that's what we're dealing with.
Yeah. And that's, that's where the water was collected, right?
Yes. And there was no, there was no water in the basement, and there was no water in the elevator room.
Yeah. Well, I guess we'll just have to just observe that. But I do think probably where there's, where there's low-lying land right now, there's probably water.
Yeah.
Way, shape, or form. But we should keep an eye on it just because it also might be indicating down the road, something going on. And maybe, Linda, as, as you're wrapping up, you might want to make notes like that for whoever is.
Oh, my goodness. Yes, yes.
Any other, any other questions on Linda's report? Sounds like things are moving along pretty well. Needless to say, we've back to hitting a few little bumps in the road.
Yeah. We'd all, we'd have a bunch.
Be regular.
We'd have a much happier crew if we didn't have to be wearing masks indoors, but that is the requirement, and everyone is dealing with it so well. I'm, I'm just so, so delighted that people are so committed to the center and being able to come and enjoy their activities and see each other, that the masks aren't holding anybody away from the senior center, so.
Good. Well, I think, I think it's wise that we're, rather than trying to figure out and look at having to examine cards and make other protocols, I think it's just probably simpler to live with a mask and not.
Well, it is, it is a decision that the selectmen made.
Yeah.
Following, you know.
That doesn't mean people don't push, won't push back or don't push back and.
Yeah. But in our case, we're very lucky.
Yeah.
You know, people, people understand it, and no, I don't think anybody loves wearing a mask, but we, we all do.
Especially those with, especially those with beards.
That's right.
Well, also, also, this, this, this demographic that we, that we support is, you know, it's a little more critical, I think, to the safe, overall safety of the group.
Yeah, I think so.
And some other groups. So, and, you know, it's, there's a nice group that comes here, and I think everybody respects the idea that they're supporting each other by making a sacrifice, so.
Exactly, though. Exactly.
Ho, hopefully that spirit will be expanded over time.
Yeah.
As we need to do this, you know. It's gonna, it's gonna come and go, and we're gonna have periods, you know, probably later this one.
Well, I suspect when, when things get cold, it'll, we'll have another, another, you know.
Yeah.
But hopefully it won't be as bad as last year.
Yep, yep. So stay flexible, right? So if there are any other questions, please ask Linda, or we should move to accept the minutes.
I don't have any questions. We're good.
Great. Right, Julie, we don't have to vote on this, right?
You don't have to vote on this.
All right. I think we're, I think our minutes are accepted. And I'm sorry, Linda's report, excuse me. As far as new business, so let's go right into Linda. What's going on?
We're having fun.
You're on stage. Tell us what's happening.
We are having fun. We did a, the second Tai Chi class, which is also filled, and we have a waiting list for that. So I, I, I think that the interest is there. I mean, it's been strong. We're, we're bringing back piano lessons, and they're coming back strong. We're, we've got five people interested in taking lessons with Estelle, and I'm working with her to set up the schedule that she feels most comfortable with. And people are ranging from brand-new, always wanted to learn this, to people who say that they're intermediates, but boy, they're awfully good intermediates, because everyone has had a chance to sit and take it, you know, a look and experience, the whole experience of, of playing on our electric piano. So and, yeah, I think, I think the overwhelming sense is that people are just so, so very happy to be able to be together and to see each other and enjoy each other. And as much as Zoom has worked well, when given the option, people would rather come in and wear a mask than to go back to Zoom, in most cases. In one or two cases, we have people who are still feeling more comfortable on Zoom. So when I added the Senior Learning Network offerings, the membership that I opted for was to show it on the big screen, where people can come into the building and sit at a safe distance and enjoy that programming on our big screen. For people who don't have computer access, it's certainly a wonderful option. And, but they were all, also offering a second kind of membership where you could, you get, can have that group, and then you could add five, five individuals to, to the showing. So I opted for the group plus five. And I think that's going to go by each individual program and, and whether people find it interesting and perhaps grow in popularity once the nice weather leaves us and people are looking for more things to do indoors. And Supson To Go is a, is a roaring success. And we've got wonderful, wonderful dedicated volunteers, both Sharon and Virginia are a big part of that success. And Ken's one of our, our regular customers, so we love seeing him every two weeks. We are for, what? Second and fourth Tuesdays. And, and that's all going very well. So yeah, you know, when I had my talk with Barbara, I had been more hopeful that we would be further along in, in the reopening of activities at the center. And that was kind of a disappointment, because I really, I really did want to leave the senior center kind of up and going again. But I'm, I'm very, very confident that whomever they, the town decides to hire for this position, will be able to continue to carry it forward in a very positive way. And and I wish them well.
It's great to hear that people are, are confident enough to come out and physically come to the place.
Yes.
You know, masks notwithstanding, great to hear the book club got out in the patio, all the opportunities were there. You know, that stuff we talked about, we've talked about a lot. It's great to see it happening. You know, I do think that the big thing about our, what, what this is all about is really getting seniors interacting and knowing each other and, and accessing the others in the community, and of course, through that, other opportunities, whether that's through, you know, whatever social net that Geraldine is offering, or, you know, chances to go shop or go, do see things else, go see things elsewhere as, as the opportunity. You know, chances to go shop or go do see things else, go see things elsewhere as, as the opportunity allows itself, but. Um, that, that's great that we're getting physical numbers rather than, you know, being limited to the remote. Access that we've had, you know, really, that, you know, except for the last six months, we've.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's wonderful that we have these additional options.
Yeah.
You know, uh, and that is, and I understand that um. When I leave, the town has made a, a decision to expand. The uh, number of hours and they're looking to bring in a full-time uh, senior center director.
Really, I didn't know, that's great.
Yeah, so I'm very excited to hear that because I, I really think. Um, that our, our potential is um, you know, we. When I started in this job, my, my goal was to always. Offer Roxbury the type of center that it wanted and um. And that's been a, you know, my, my guiding. Um, premise and, and um, I, I'm delighted that it's, it's going to. You know, we're going to be able to offer more, um, because the community certainly. Uh, seems to be embracing it and uh.
So will be a, it will be a full-time position, the new director?
Yeah, the new director will be a full-time.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, Linda, I'm not sure if it's gonna be a forty hour a week or something less than that.
I believe it's gonna be thirty-five.
Yeah, so, so right, exactly.
But that's.
I, I don't. See it as changing sort of our, hours of operation so much, uh, uh, you know, might take a little more time. I, I, I'm just not sure how that.
Well, that's quite a difference compared to what Linda's hours are now.
Right.
Yeah. That's, that's quite an increase, so um, I think it's wonderful. Yeah, I think it's very, very.
So then they will be giving full-time benefits to the new director?
Um, I, I believe that is the plan.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah. Well, I think it, I think it honestly needs to be a full-time job.
It was, I did notice it was advertised today. On employment opportunities in Roxbury.
Yeah, I mean, Linda, you, you, right, at, at this point, right, like, aren't you capped at about like twenty-eight hours?
No, well, I, I get paid for twenty-six. And um. And I'm happy to be paid for twenty-six.
We got you another hour or two.
Yeah, I, I have always made, I have always given a full-time commitment to my part-time job and uh. Because how can you not, how can you not when you work in Roxbury?
Well, then, I, I'm, I, again, I haven't spoken to, to Barbara about it, I guess it's really not. Technically our business, but um, I guess maybe it, it may turn into. Uh, turning into more hours uh, during the week, I don't, I don't know.
Yeah.
Thirty-five hours, sounds like that, that, that might, that might require, you know. What are you gonna do with the other nine hours, you know, it's gotta, it's gotta be, some's gotta give.
Yeah, it's pretty exciting, I think it's pretty exciting.
Yeah, yeah, um, and um, and the, the um, uh, you know. Was it formal, was it for, did it formally go out today, do you think, uh, Sharon?
Yes, yes, I saw it online today under Town of Roxbury Employment Opportunities.
Okay.
Um, Senior Center Director.
Great, great, well, uh, I, I don't know what the timetable is, but I guess it's gotta be quick, Linda, how long are you, are you?
I think the, I think the deadline was September thirtieth.
Oh, really?
Or applicant, no, I just mean in terms of the, of acting on it and decide, you know, Linda, when are. When are you uh, planning on leaving, mid-October, is that what I had heard?
Well, I mean, that's what Barbara and I discussed, but I also discussed to her, with her rather that um. Uh, you know, it's not like I'm going anywhere, you know, I'm, I'm here, um. I know that I want to retire, I wanna, I want. Again, because I, I just love this community and I care about the, the success of the senior center so much. I, I made it very clear that I would stay as long as uh, I, I was needed um, with. You know, but let's do it by December, if we could.
Yeah, there, there needs to, there needs to be an end game, so yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so um.
Well, that's good because I mean, it sounds like you guys have talked about. You know, a transition plan that um, gives everybody an opportunity to get up to speed and.
Right.
You know.
Right, I mean, I will say, and I certainly, you know, as I say, I'm just down the road and um. I'm happy to be called, um, there's, there's. Uh, a lot that goes on there, there's a lot of history, there's um. You know, and, and I'm sure that whoever they hire is going to want to have an understanding of, of a lot of that, so um. Um, so there'll, there'll be some, hopefully some overlap time when um. Uh, I, I, I celebrate, you know, the idea that whoever comes. Uh, will come with their own ideas and I am very excited to hear what. They're gonna be because I'm sure they're gonna be great and um, and that makes me very happy.
Right, and, and I think it's gonna be extremely important for you to be able to share with that person who the real. Who, you know, there, there, I mean, uh, outside of this board, there are quite a number of, of. Important, you know, stakeholders who have been very supportive and. You know, systems are in place and so forth and that'll help whoever comes in to understand those things, so.
Yeah.
And I know everybody in, in this group will, will assist as uh, they can to whoever is the uh, your successor.
Well, I, I am sure that this community will embrace that person and um. And want to help in any way that they can, so much of, of what we do. At the senior center is all based on relationships and, you know, we've got a great relationship with the library and we've got a great relationship with. Um, the people who print our newsletter and, and I'm, I have no doubt that anyone that the town, this town would hire. Is only going to improve on all of that, so uh, again, I'm, I'm looking forward to um, helping in any way.
Right, so the big question is, Linda, what are you gonna do?
I'm gonna have fun. No, I, I am looking, no, John and I are just looking forward to having a little bit more time. Uh, you know, we turned around and said one day, you know, we're getting older. And uh, it must, it's just, you know, it's just time to have a little bit more time together and uh.
Yeah, I don't want to hear about you bringing, you know, the whole skateboarding idea over to the Bridgewater.
Yeah, really. You have to, you have to, you have to.
In the morning.
Yeah, but, and I, and I really, uh, in my note to you, you know, this board especially has been. So delightful to work with you all, you've all always been so supportive and caring and um. And I know, you know, that whoever takes this, this job and, and is, is going to appreciate you all as much as I do because. You're really an incredibly generous, um. Wonderful, supportive group and I thank you again.
No, you're welcome.
You're welcome.
Thank, thank you and you know, you've been, uh, you've, you've really been great for us to work with and. You know, and I, and I know a lot of you, more so than I do, you know, a lot of you folks see each other. Much more regularly, but you know, I think we, I've always felt that as a group. You've given us great guidance and I, and I think we've always had a very open. Um, open relationship and that's because you're a very open person, so um, I've really. I appreciate, I personally, but I think I speak for everybody, really has appreciated your, your efforts on, on our behalf and making the senior center really a. A wonderful, open, welcoming place and uh, you know, hopefully we'll. We'll continue that and we'll continue to not only draw people from Roxbury, but, but other friends from other places as well.
I think it's so important to be open and, and uh, and I have to say, we've, we've had. Wonderful response from some of our newest residents, um, they have really just been so impressed with our center and. The quality of the classes that we offer and um, you know, um. To be told that our exercise classes is better than the one they went to in New York. Was, you know, it's, it's, it's happy news, but it's not surprising to me because I always knew it was that good. So um.
With our exercise groups, I mean Laura is so, such a great aerobics teacher and. Susan Bradley with the new Tai Chi, she's excellent and uh.
Yes.
You know, and we love Zumba, but we can't do that anymore because the instructor's not vaccinated.
But you know, that, that class is growing, um, and um. And people are just enjoying it and uh, I am trying to work with Jimmy to figure out a way that we can make all of our classes hybrid. So um. Uh, we're, that's, that's one of my goals, hopefully before I leave, to have that all set up and, and um. And if I, if I can't get it done, well, well, maybe I'll ask the new person to see if she would consider or he would consider that a priority.
You know, as we've discussed in the past, you know, there's so many things that are important for our, this community to, to have and one of them is. You know, uh, outlets for physical as well as uh, you know, intellectual stimulation and.
Right.
Like that, and I think we've, we've really struck and struck, have struck a great balance and um, I'm sure you'll share that with.
Yes, yes, I mean, um, the watercolor classes that Sandra Quantrill, I mean. The time and the effort that she put into those classes, I, I can't even begin to tell you how impressed I was, um. She but went out and bought a second computer and, and had all this professional lighting and. Oh, it was, it was, uh, it was very, very hard to, you know, step away after I welcomed everybody to the class. Um, and then I would come in at the end of the class and. Just to see the quality of the work that people were doing, wow, my goodness, it was amazing. And um, it's just, uh, yeah, it, it's, it's, I've always said. I've considered my work here more of a joy than a job and, and it's, you know, maybe that sounds trite, but it's, it's the honest. Way that I feel about it, it's just absolutely, you know, uh. The people here are exceptional, just exceptional.
Nice to be able to feel that way about a job, that's for sure.
Yeah, yeah, well, well, you know, you've done a great job and.
We have.
Well, thank you.
Yes.
And, and you know, there's, there, you know, all we can say is thank you for that and thank you for. You know, e- every month helping us understand what you were up against and, and listening to some of the. Good ideas and terrible ideas that we've had in such a generous way and. Um, I think it, eh, you know, in the end, you, you, you've really navigated this beautifully and, and really. From my recollection, I think some of you guys are closer to it than I am, but you know, I think this senior center really developed. Uh, during your tenure, Linda, from, from, you know, something that had. Nice, nice components and nice elements to a really comprehensive. Uh, uh, a, a, assortment of offerings to, to, you know, allow many people of many different. Uh, interests to come and enjoy themselves and especially, and especially, you know, you should. Get the Purple Heart or something for the hard work and the way you, you were able to pivot and make things. Happen uh, during COVID.
Yeah, I, I think that's, that's especially true, yeah, for sure.
You know, I mean, it was, you know, this place, you know, I mean, I, you know, and I know other places have done it too, but you know. Eh, eh, it's the same spirit all around to, to, you know, serve. Uh, our constituency uh, in a way that was accessible and, you know, everybody was learning all the time and. Adjusting and adapting, you know, and they were doing it in business, but they're also doing it in their private life and I, and I really think. You know, your work uh, kept us relevant at a time when we could have become less than that.
Mm-hmm, well.
So I agree.
More than anything else, thank you for that.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you for those very kind words, I appreciate it very much.
Um. So we'll learn more as we go, so this may not be your last meeting, eh?
I, yeah, I, I, well, it's, it's good to know that uh, the job's been posted and um. And uh, I. You know, as I say, I, I have every confidence that um. Uh, the future of the senior center is, is only going to be brighter, you know, the um. The commitment the town is making to making. The position full-time is huge, uh, and I'm sure that you will. Be reviewing a lot of very, very um. Um, qualified uh, resumes and, and um, and I, I, I know. That um, whoever wins Bruce and, and um, and, and also Patrick, um. Whoever takes on the role as first selectman will, will. Care about the senior center as much as. Quite honestly, the entire community, I, I truly do believe cares so much about offering our seniors. Um, the very best senior center that we can.
I can remember, remember when I was just getting started and it was, it's been a long road and it was. It took a lot to get it going in the beginning and uh, it's, it's, it's gotten to the, to the point now where it's. Quite an amazing uh, facility, programs are incredible and you know, I just, the only question I have. Is Linda, are you involved with the interview process?
I don't know, I don't know, I don't know whether I will be the, I'm happy.
Cause you're, you're not like, you're not living in an adversar, in an adversarial way, you know, so therefore it would, it would seem rational that you should be, you should be actually, so um.
Well, um.
I'm just throwing it out there, so.
Yeah, whatever I'm asked to do, I'm happy to do.
Yeah, I wouldn't be surprised if, certainly if Barbara asks. Linda for some input on it, I mean, I frankly don't think we will be asked because technically, you know, I think our role has always been sort of the building. And supporting the, the director. Um, so I, I, I have had some brief conversations with Barbara about what her plan was and it's never, and, and it, and it's perfectly fine for me, it's not. It's never included anything where, where, you know, there, there needs to be another cook in the kitchen, I think.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, I, I got pretty confident that, yeah, and uh, yeah.
Eh, I, I, I'm, I'm quite sure that Barbara and whoever else is making this choice. Um, are, are acutely aware of, of, you know, what goes on here, what the need is. Um, you know, it'd be great if we can get somebody who has some experience in it, bring some new ideas for us to consider. Um, and support, um. You know, and, and continues, you. You know, the, the, uh, the, the growth and the, um, you know, the good, the good things that we do and just, you know, hopefully offers more of it and again, maybe. More time of day uh, that we can be serving people.
Well, the, the town has clearly made that, you know, a priority and um, uh, I think that, that means a lot, you know.
Yeah, it's great, so, um, so, so um, I'm gonna stop this, I'm gonna move, move the love fest off for a second. Uh, and, cause I'm curious, how did the um, the vaccination, um, right, that was last week? Where we did the vaccination program?
Yes, it, it went quite, quite well, the team from Griffin Hospital was outstanding, um. We didn't get a huge number, but you know, 16 people is still 16 people. And I think that if that means that there are, you know, people that got the protection that they needed and wanted, that's great. That's great.
Were, were most of the people who were vaccinated receiving their, do you know of hand, were, were they receiving their first vaccination or?
In some cases they were. In some cases there were. And, and one, one person it really, I found intriguing because she was still very tentative. And, and I, I was very glad to see how well the medical team worked with her in explaining to her, you know, why they needed certain information. They, they handled it well. They truly did. And Geraldine is, Geraldine and I, I have to give her full credit because she was the lead person on this. So, but she's going to be working with Griffin Hospital to decide how they're, how we're going forward. This is still, it's still, you know, very much a day by day, week by week process of, are we, are we recommending boosters or, you know, are we not going forward with boosters?
Well, I think, I think we'll find out tomorrow.
Yeah, yes. That is, that is the day.
Yeah, tomorrow, yeah.
So.
I went on the site, I went on the site and actually I, I used the VAM site to do both of mine up at Highwatch. And it said I could go get one.
Yeah. Booster or a third shot?
Oh, third shot or a booster. Yeah, exactly.
Yeah. Because the booster shot supposedly, again, I'm not a doctor. But the third shot, what we have been told is a different medical formula, formulation than a third shot.
Highwatch was, Highwatch was, Highwatch was offering it for two days, the, yesterday and today, and that was it. And so it was the booster and that was it. So obviously they had, they had X number of shots, I suspect. But I didn't, I didn't get it just because I, I see my doctor tomorrow. So I thought I better ask him first.
Well, it does seem to be there's a, there's a little conflicting information, you know, if.
Also too, like, like myself who had a breakthrough infection, you know, I don't know if I need to wait three months before I can get the booster or not, or can I go ahead and get it right away, you know? So that, there's things like that, that, you know, there's a lot of, there's not a lot of information around really.
Right.
Plus the free shot.
You're only talking about Pfizer is the booster and they haven't approved the Moderna yet. And it sounds like people who took J and J might be in another batch of, you know, issues or, you know, who knows? But my, my only point would be, I, I think the idea of having it in Roxbury was great. Because, you know, we're kind of, you know, in a funny way, we're sort of in the fringe. Anything we can do, bless, anything that we can do to, you know, going forward. And I know Linda, you know, this is something more, maybe a comment as part of the transition. You know, anything we can do to serve the help needs in this particular moment by making it easier to do things would be great. I'm sure part of the reason you only got 16 people is because lots of people here have been vaccinated and probably so in, in this age group. But, you know, going forward, it might make it easier for people to make that decision to, you know, accept that, that third shot. It also, I, I think we can't lose sight of the flu. We, you know, Linda, you guys ran a great flu drive-by last year.
Yeah.
And, and, you know, I think, you know, that's not as though we're supposed, you know, we're supposed to be a medical organization, but the needs of, everybody else does it. And if we can keep our folks from having to drive the 20 or 30 minutes to a surrounding town and where they can do it in a more comfortable space where they know the people and they know their friends are doing it, it would be great.
One of the things that, one of the things that the mask, masking did for us, I have my family, I have a lot, several medical professionals in my family and, and, and my own doctor, last year, last fall, they had virtually no flu cases.
Yeah.
Yes. I think there was one case of flu in the state.
Yeah, and just because everybody's wearing masks, it works.
Yeah. Right, right, right. And, and, you know, I do want, I will comment about the flu. As we know, it's short for influenza. And when people ask us, how long will we be dealing with COVID? That's probably instructive because we've been dealing with influenza for 100 years.
Yeah, yeah.
So, you know, there, this won't, this won't be the last, the last thing we see at our senior center where hopefully we can, you know, make it easier, as I say, make it easier and more.
Yeah.
For, for some of those.
Yeah, they, for some people, it's a, it's a comfort level, you know? And they, they feel comfortable coming to us and that's, that's a very nice thing. That's a compliment.
Trust is important.
Yeah.
Well, great. I, I, I was curious and I'm, I'm actually quite surprised you had 16. That's, to me, that's a great turnout in a state that's had so much apparently success in getting the vaccine distributed.
Linda, were they all Roxbury residents?
Some were and some were not. Although one of the people who was not had a Shapog shirt on. So I assume he was some sort of a employee, school district. And he has now, I think, I don't think he, he lived in town. But the important thing is that he got his shot and he's protected. And hopefully, you know, will be part of that protection circle that we can, we have.
Well, kudos to Geraldine for getting, you know, getting that done. Hopefully she will be able to continue to develop that relationship for, for the things that we were just talking about as time goes on.
They're coming back again for the second shot for those 16.
Yes, yes. I think we, we though have to, because there's a different number of weeks in between first and second, depending on whether or not you had the Moderna or the COVID, not COVID, the Pfizer.
Right.
Vaccine. Moderna, I think it was a four-week wait and with Pfizer, it's a three-week or two.
Pfizer's a little shorter.
So, and, and then of course, there was one person that I asked for the J and J because they wanted to be one and done. So, you know, whatever. I think the important thing is, is that it was, it was a very, very valuable service to the community once again.
Three or four weeks you might, or whenever, whenever the timetable is for them coming back.
Yeah.
You know, according, you know, as Kenny mentioned, you know, we might be hearing that boosters are available and perhaps they'll be able to include that in their, in their array of, of options.
Well, Geraldine has been on this, on the job there, making sure that she gets the correct information. And hopefully we'll be able to, if we, if we can't get into the newsletter, just because of time, we need to turn that around. There is, there is Barbara's great, you know, town hall blast of information for, for everyone.
Which I'm sure will be continued because it's great, it was shared information quickly.
Right, right.
And it's the way of the world.
And, and people can always call us, you know? I mean, sometimes, you know, we might not have an answer, but we do say, please call us and, or leave a number and we will get back to you. And that's one thing that Geraldine and I are dedicated to. We, we get back to people when they call.
That's great. Then the, the last thing here is, is just any news on, on fall programming? Again, this was initially together in August, so I guess we're partway through the fall anyway. And I'm not even sure if when we did this, we knew you were, you were leaving. So any, any tidbits you want to share on that? I, I think you probably covered it in previous comments you had made.
Well, I, I, I hope that we can still continue in that very positive path forward. We're, we, in October, we're going to be doing a wonderful Barbara Bradford page from the Land Trust is going to be doing a, a walk along the Shapog and sharing information with people. It will be outdoors. We'll have a ring date. Again, book discussion, everybody, you know, we met on Zoom, but when we were able to meet in person, it was, everyone was so excited to see each other, even although we had seen each other on those little, those little squares. Great discussions. And yeah, we, we're going to do apple picking and continuing to try to do outdoor things and that little bit of that window of, of good weather that we're hoping to have. And, and just going forward with, I, I still have a, a waiting list for Tai Chi. I, I very purposefully wanted to keep the classes small as a safety measure. And I, I'm hoping that, you know, we'll be able to accommodate more people. But as I say, people are, in this community are extraordinarily kind and patient. And, you know, they, they understand. They say, please put us on the waiting list. And they know that they'll get a call.
If, if the waiting list is getting long, is there a possibility that you might be able to do two sessions?
We're already doing two sessions. We added the second class. So I think, you know, perhaps I'll talk to the instructor. You know, I, I moved furnishings around upstairs and I, I captured every available inch I could. And, you know, we're not all that big, even when we're, you know, not still dealing with a pandemic. So whether we could add one, maybe we could add two, to each class that might. What do you think, Virginia? You were in Tai Chi and.
Yeah, well, yeah, I, I, today was my first class and it was great. I loved it. I loved it. But you do need room. You, you do, you do need some space to move around just from what I saw with the first class. I mean, you might be able to get another person in there, no problem, but probably not much more than that. What do you think, Sharon? I think eight is about, about it. The only other option was for Susan to stand up on the platform, you know, the upper level.
Right.
But, but she didn't really think that was the really the thing to do for Tai Chi, her being on this hardwood floor like we are in level, that that was better. And doing it that way, I think probably the eight is about it.
Yeah, yeah. The same thing with yoga. I mean, it's, it's amazing when you put, you know, eight chairs in a circle and you're trying to create as much distance in between each chairs as we can.
Right.
That's kind of it, you know? So.
Well, there's worse things to have than being popular. So, you know. Develops and, you know, I, it's, it's too bad if you wind up with like five people that can't, that can't come, you know, because the interest is there. But, you know, unless we come up with something else and we don't have bigger room, you know, it's not like we're just going to do the bigger room.
Do we fall under any, do we fall under any kind of state guidelines because we're dealing with the elderly or no? Because, but, you know, everywhere I went in Italy, if you didn't have a vaccination card, you basically went hungry. You know, you can't, you can't, you know, so I just was curious if we had any kind of a policy or what, do we fall under any state guidelines specifically about that subject?
Well, there were, there were some guidelines. You know, we, we were at six feet apart, then we were three feet apart. I, I.
And, and maybe, maybe for us it's not a big deal because, you know, we're so intimate with everyone. We know who is who and who does and who doesn't and all those things anyway. But, you know, and everybody is so respectful. I've never had a, a single issue, you know? So it may be, maybe, it may be a mule point really too, so.
Yeah, but I think with exercise, whether we had COVID or not, sometimes there's just a requirement to have a certain amount of space to be able.
Yeah, yeah, I, I think, I think so.
Trying to do, you know, and, you know, and we just don't have another, you know, a curtain we can pull or a.
Yeah, we don't have enough.
Another room we could go to or take over another spot, you know, it becomes quite limited in terms of our.
Well, I think, yeah, and as, as I think I've mentioned to you that one of the, one of the positives that has come out of the pandemic is the, the ability that I've had to participate with my peers and my colleagues throughout the state through the Connecticut Association of Senior Center Personnel. And that's been a wonderful thing. They, they tend to be more center-state focused. So, you know, and, and for me to take, you know, an hour to go to Hartford, if I'm lucky, and, and then come back, I, I just, the meetings were always interesting. But, but now there's, there's even more very relevant and helpful information and.
You probably have a lot more participation too, I'll bet.
Yeah. Yes, it, the group has grown.
Yeah.
And, and everyone recognizes the importance of that growth because we are all in this, in the same business, so.
And as you say, you know, being able to save just the time going back, it's just like workers, you know?
Yeah.
And, you know, they're, a good, a person who's savvy at, at the Zoom thing can share stuff as good as anybody or, and, you know, it's, it's a very efficient thing. I mean, you know, I think on the day-to-day, the way we run that, this organization is, it's one thing, it's great to have FaceTime, but when it comes to sharing ideas with other people from all over the place, this is a great way to go. And I'm sure going forward, this is going to be the way it goes.
Definitely. It's my, my, my whole business has shifted. I used to do 40,000 miles a year. I don't think I'll do 10 next year just because the customers don't expect you to be there for everything. Only, only when I really have to be there, I'm there now. A lot of things we're handling online now through, through Teams or Zoom or something. So my, my time in the car is about, is going to be about a third of what it was, you know? So that's the good thing for me that's come out of the pandemic. It's changed the way I do my business completely.
I think it's changed the way a lot of businesses have worked. And, and, and I know the wonderful thing about CASP is that, you know, although some days I don't appreciate the 50 messages in my inbox. Because it's like, oh my goodness, somebody asks a question and they send it to everybody. And then everybody who has something, they feel as though they are able to contribute, they contribute. And you learn, oh my goodness, you learn so much about what other people are doing and how they're functioning. And it's, it's really been a wonderful, a wonderful, if there's one good thing that came out of, out of this.
Yeah, yeah. Kind of forced us into the 21st century in certain quarters of what we.
I know, yeah. My, my, my best, my best, although I, we. I know, yeah. I, my, my best, my best, although I, we had a ninety-four year old gentleman. Who wanted to take the water color class and. He just. You know, he says, I, I wanna do this so badly, but I, I don't understand Zoom. And I said. I, we can do this, we can do this. And, um. And I said, what we'll do is I'll send you. Uh, an email with the link and then you and I'll talk and then when classes start. You'll know how to do this and, um. And actually I have to thank you guys because, um, I was, uh. We were just struggling and struggling and struggling and I was to the point where it's like, well, do I go out there and show them or? Or what do we do? And then I think it was our last time together. And it suddenly hit me. He wants this to be more complicated than it is. It's just, you know, see that blue link and click. And, and, you know, I called him up, I called him up the next day and I said. I think I've got it. I think I've got it. Let's try this. And I, I said, we'll, we'll stay on the phone and, um. And you're gonna promise me you're gonna have to be patient because it takes a minute. To, you know, click that on and have it all open up. It's kind of a little bit like magic, but not really. And, um, and, and he was so overjoyed. And I have to tell you what this gentleman. Has, has done with his, with his love of water color and, um. The outstanding, um, uh, the outstanding, uh, instruction from Santa Quantrill has just been incredible. So, uh, so, yeah, we, we all learned a lot. We all learned a lot.
Great. Um, a- as I look at this, I realize, I think I skipped something here. With our friends of the Roxbury Senior Center Report and I'm not. Sure if, if there's anything to report, but somehow we went from directors to new business. So I'm sorry.
I was wondering when you were gonna get to that.
Yeah, believe me, I'm not letting you guys off the hook.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You guys, you guys actually know what's going on. In the future.
You want, want me to do this? Sharon, when you guys want me to do this?
Sure.
Okay, um, we, I think the last time we met, we were planning on doing the ice cream social in August. And, um. We got Barbara Josephson. Uh, I think her daughter or daughter-in-law, someone works at Arathusa. Farms and they got us the ice cream donated, which was wonderful. And I think we took orders for. I want to say maybe forty-five or fifty. Ice cream cups, you know, scoops of ice cream and the day was really nice. And when we got there. Barbara and Brooke Wheeler had, um, prepared seventy-five cups of ice cream. And I think with the exception of maybe two or three, um, we sold them all. So we had, we had lots of people come that hadn't even signed up, but. You know, someone came and they wanted a couple more than they had originally ordered or whatever. So we did, I think somewhere around seventy-two or seventy-three.
Yeah, I think that's what it was.
Right, wasn't it Sharon, something like that? Cups of ice cream that were just about everything that we had. Um, we sold, which was great and people loved it. There were families with kids and I mean, it was, it was really nice. Um, and they just sat there at the tables and, you know. Ate their ice cream and the kids played on the playground and whatever. And it was really nice. It was a nice outreach, I think. Um, and Barbara and Brooke did a lot of work in scooping ice cream.
Yeah.
And bringing it over all ready to go.
Right.
We're doing.
Hey, you're lucky there wasn't Little League game on. You would have been swamped.
I know, but there wasn't, no.
You would have been.
That would have been a good idea. Um, the harvest dinner is a week from Friday. And we're still taking reservations. Um, Brooke is. Excuse me. Taking reservations for, um, dinners. And the dinners are being prepared by the Northville store, the chef at the Northville store. Um, I checked with Brooke last night and as of last night, we had forty-two, I think, reservations.
Actually, it's up to forty-five. I saw Brooke, Brooke just, um, before I left today.
Oh, okay, good.
Forty-five, that's great.
Yeah, I'm hoping maybe we can get, uh, you know, me, I'd like to have like sixty. You know, whatever, because they'll make as many as we want them to make. I think we have to let them know Tuesday. The count, um, you know, for Friday, obviously they need a few days. So hopefully we pick up a few more. Um, orders between now and then.
Yeah.
Excuse me?
I said you probably will.
I hope so.
Oh, I.
I hope so. We get a few more.
So, Virginia, will they do more than what you order in case people show up?
I think we could ask them to do whatever.
Like five percent or whatever.
Yeah, you know, we, we may, yeah, we might do like maybe. Five, like we do with Sup-Son.
Yeah.
Maybe have, like, maybe have like five extra dinners there or something, you know, because they're kind of expensive, so we can't. Order too many beyond what was ordered.
Right.
But, you know, we probably will have like an extra five or something.
Yeah.
If someone says, oh, I forgot, you know, and whatever, um. And then, so that's a week from Friday. Um, going to be to pick up at the pavilion and either. Eat it there at the picnic tables if you so desire or to bring them home. You know, whatever. Um, so we're, that's next Friday between five, five-thirty and seven, I think is.
Five-thirty and seven, yeah.
Thirty and seven is pickup time. So we're doing pretty well with that. Um, and I think we have a good group of people on. The board of the Friends now who have some, you know, different ideas from those of us who have been there a while. Um, and are, and are willing to work. You know, and, and know the routine a little bit more than like I do, like Brooke Wheeler is great as the, as the treasurer and. Just all around, you know, town person who knows like everything. You know, if you need tablecloths, Brooke's got them. You know, if you need teacups, Brooke's got them, you know, so it's, it's nice having that kind of a connection. And then we're. I'm planning on doing a Christmas tea, a Victorian tea at Christmas time. On the day when we normally would do the festival, the Christmas festival. Which is the first Saturday in December. And so we haven't started working on that, but we will.
Will that sort of be a, a late afternoon sort of thing?
Yeah, I think it was gonna be like. Four to five-thirty, something like that, so that you can go to the Christmas tree lighting. After it would kind of coincide with.
Yeah, right.
With the Christmas tree lighting. Um, and so we're, you know, we will start working on that. We haven't, um, started yet, but. Um, but we will. One thing at a time.
Yeah, absolutely.
All the poinsettia sale too, right Sharon? We're gonna do a poinsettia sale, which Pam Rusko heads up. Um, and that, that really works very well and it, that's, that's fun. I like, I like to go to, where do we go? Cheshire?
Yeah.
Where the, uh, the wholesale, um, flower distributor is and it's like a wonderland of poinsettias. It's like amazing, but anyway, we're going to do that also. Um, at Christmas.
Will that be on a separate day or will that be somehow sort of?
It'll be, it'll be a, it, it usually is a separate day. Um, this way people have them, you know, um, Pam, and again, Pam Rusko. Has all the ins and outs of that and, you know, we, and we bring them all back to the senior center and separate them all out. And then there's a timeframe when people pick them up.
And it's typically that Saturday when they can pick up.
Yeah, and I think we did last year. I think we did a, a Friday also.
I think we did, we did Thursday and Friday last year and Sat- and Saturday for the.
Saturday morning, yeah.
Morning, yeah.
But, but a separate, a separate date from the tea.
No.
Day of the tea or the same?
No, it's the same weekend. If we do Thursday, Friday, then it would be Saturday morning of the tea.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah.
So, and then that works on, that works out well. They have beautiful poinsettias there. I think people generally have been happy with the ones that they've ordered.
Oh, they're beautiful. They're beautiful. The quality is incredible. And I, I, and I, I can't say strongly enough. What a joy it is to work with the Friends and, and all of the wonderful volunteers who's, who work with the Friends. Um, it's just a joy, just a joy.
Yeah, and they, you know, they're, they're a good working group of people that, you know, are.
Yeah.
Are interested in doing some new things and whatever, which is what we needed, so.
Yeah.
So it's good. Anything else that I missed?
More people and more ideas. Nothing beats that.
Yeah, which really helps. Which really helps. Cause we have a lot. We have a lot of, we have, we have a lot of old dogs. I mean, you know, you know, you can teach old dogs new tricks, but sometimes you need the new dogs to, you know.
So can you have a Santa Claus show up at the tea?
Santa Claus wants to show up. I have no, I can bring that to the Friends and see what they think about that. I can't imagine there'd be an objection to a Santa Claus at Christmas.
My goodness, not especially are the Roxbury Santa Claus.
Well, I know where the uniform is if we need to find it.
I was kind of counting on that, Bill.
Great, let me know.
Okay, we will.
Happy to do it if you want it.
Thank you.
You know, tea sounds so formal for Santa though.
Well, you know, it's a Roxbury tea, you know, we're kind of casual.
Yeah, but you know how the ladies like to gather around Santa Claus, so.
Right, I do.
He's a good guy. He's a good guy.
Great, well, thanks. That, that, that's great. You guys are, you know, it's never like there's any worry about it. You're always ahead of the game and. Um, it, it sounds like, you know, what you're dreaming up is just nothing but fun. So that's. That's great. And, and will benefit us in the long run.
Yes, we're trying, we're trying, yeah.
Yeah, I really think the ice cream thing, you know, a- 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 as you say, you know, it was a. It was a great way to engage people that we normally don't see too. You know, in, in terms of, in the community, it's not like the senior, you know, and, and we've talked about this in the past. You know, it's not like the senior center is just some separate thing that. You know, is exclusive. In the community, uh, because some of our other stuff just doesn't reach out as, doesn't travel as well.
Well, and, and certainly, certainly the Friends, uh, Sup-Son to Go has just been. Besting kind of outstanding outreach to the community and, um. People are so supportive of it and, uh.
Well, I will, I, I, I need, when you talk about Sup-Son, I've got it, it's, it's just, uh. It's a special place for me because right after Nancy passed away is when I started to go on for the Sup-Son on Tuesdays. And for me, that was like, uh, a little bit of a lifeline. Um, and it was, um, so it's, it's, I'm really hoping that at some point we can get back to that.
Yeah, we are, we are.
I, I am too.
Sup-Son like it was.
Yeah, yeah, um, yeah, I mean, that's the goal. I, I had. Back in, in July, I thought we would be. Able to do that if, in September, if not October, but, um. We're. Our guidance from the Health District is nah, not such a good idea, so, um.
Yeah, well, that's okay.
Yeah, well, it's, you know. Well, no, no more when we know more, but you know, at the time being, I think, I think being. Being flexible and responding. You know, nimbly to the things that get thrown in front of us, you know.
Yeah, you have to be flexible, yeah.
You know, whether it's the Friends, Linda, whether it's you with the, with the, you know, the, the, the community in general. Um, you know, everybody should, you know, tip our, tip their hats to you guys because you've done a great job at. At being flexible and being nimble and being able to. Make things happen in the, you know, the best way we could make it happen. But, you know, the, the worst thing would have been that it stopped happening.
Right.
Right. Never stopped happening and that's great.
Well, I have to tell you though, I think when we do get back inside for Sup-Son on the Tuesdays like we normally did, I think people are gonna be really excited. I mean, I don't think, I don't think we can do it until people are able to give each other a hug because I can imagine. The people who literally came to Sup-Son, you know, just being totally thrilled that they're back. You know, in person again.
Yeah.
That's the strange part in a way. Uh, Sup-Son to Go has gotten new people coming. But some of the people that used to come to the inside haven't come to the outside Sup-Son to Go. So, um, they probably really are missing not being inside and seeing everybody.
Yeah. Big part of it, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, no, the fellowship's an important thing. And, and, you know, like I say, we're, you guys are doing the best. You know, facsimile of it that.
It really worked out well.
Yeah, I mean, we, we just, you know, gotta play by the rules that are set before us, but. That doesn't mean we can't think outside of the box about the, those rules.
We, we don't get discouraged, not.
We don't give up.
And, and, and we've got it. We've got it down to a system. We know what we're doing now. We've been doing it. So we, we've got it down to a system. So it's, it's working well.
It's a great system.
It's working well.
Um, all right, is there any other, any other business or anything anybody, uh. Wants to bring up that, that wasn't on the agenda or, um, is, is on your minds?
I think we're good.
We're good.
All right, well, listen, um, I, I'm sure, and I guess it's really only gonna be about another two weeks before we get to meet again anyway. Um, so I'm sure we'll have some interesting stuff to talk about then. In the next few weeks, I'm sure. You know, some of the news that we get will, will advise some of the ways that we do things. Um, you know, let's just hope we, you know, we don't, we don't. See continued rising, certainly not in this area. Uh, of the, of the variant. And, uh, let's hope we don't get any more weird variants going on.
Yeah, for sure.
But, you know, it is a good time of year. Let's all, you know, enjoy that and encourage, encourage folks to do the same and, um. I, I guess, uh, I, will someone, if we're ready to go, someone make a move to adjourn?
I'll, because I would say, I'll make that motion to adjourn.
The way you jumped at that, I have to say. The enthusiasm given was to adjournment. Uh, do I have a second of that?
I'll second it.
All right, great. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, thanks, everybody for coming. We'll, we'll. Need to get in a couple of weeks.
Oh, yeah.
Organizing us so well.
Bye-bye, thank you.
It's nice to be on, thanks.
Thank you.
Everyone, bye Bruce.
Bye-bye, good night, everyone.
Bye-bye.